The October. I'd like to open the Tuesday, October eighth meeting, uh, twenty twenty-four of the Larkspur Planning Commission. Um, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
And Commissioner or the Chair Natasha Chalmers is absent tonight and Tamara Hull is absent because she's recused from considering the one item you have on your calendar.
Okay.
But you have a quorum.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, as Vice Chair, I guess I'm acting Chair tonight. So, uh, let's have a public comment on matters that are not on the agenda. Anything this is not on tonight's agenda.
Is, is anyone in the audience have their hand raised, Alex Dino?
If anybody on Zoom wants to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
For matter not on the.
For a matter not on the agenda.
All right. Seeing none, uh, we will continue. Are there any planning directors reports?
Yeah, I'm very excited to report that we received a letter today that our housing element was certified by the state.
Excellent.
So now we're in compliance. I gave you a copy of the letter so you can look at it. And that's all I have to report.
Excellent. Um, all right, then continued public hearing. Um, this is, uh, on three sixty via La Paz in Greenbry. Larkspur APN zero seven zero dash three two one dash five four. Lino Granada applicant Hackman Designs LLC owner R one. Uh, this request for permits to allow for the construction of a new three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square foot, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage on a vacant three thou- thirty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two square foot, uh, which is zero point eight six acre lot. One thousand sixty square feet is exempt from the floor area as below grade with a ceiling height lower than seven feet, resulting in adjusted floor area of two thousand six hundred eighty-nine square feet. All right. So this requires a design review for new residents, a slope use permit to allow for a grading. Oh, that's we're continuing that. I'm sorry.
And we're just gonna mention that, um,
Yeah, we.
The applicant is working on revised designs and would like to present them to the neighbors before he returns.
Right.
So we're asking that you continue the item with a motion to October twenty-second.
Right.
At seven P M.
Right. This is the, uh, the residents that we looked at at our last planning commission meeting who required a contin- a continuance.
Correct.
All right. And that's what today's, uh, this issue is about is a continuance.
It's just to continue it to October twenty-second.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Yes.
All right.
If someone can make a motion to continue.
I move to continue this item to the October twenty-second. Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second it. Oh, I'll second it.
Vote.
Uh, Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And the next, uh, item on our agenda is a public hearing on one thousand Drake's Landing Road in Greenbry. APN zero two two dash zero five zero dash zero six. Uh, and, uh, dash, well, I'll just leave those be through several, uh, numbers. Um, O'Neil Mullen LLC owner, our three third residential zoning district PLN twenty-four dash zero three. Uh, this is a request for permits associated with the demolition of an existing office building, surface parking and landscaping, and for construction of nineteen townhome units in four buildings, which will be initially offered as rentals on approximately zero point seven nine acres. The project would include three units deed restricted for low-income households and one unit deed restricted for a moderate income household. All right. So do we have the applicant here? Oh yeah. First, let's have the staff report. I'm sorry.
Are you ready to go?
And then we'll have hear from you.
Okay, good.
All right. Guys were keeping me honest tonight.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Sean Kennings. I'm a, uh, planning consultant. I'm the contract planner on the project tonight. And as you said, this is the one thousand Drake's Landing Road. Uh, hearing for a multifamily residential project. Uh, there's two bits of housekeeping. Um, we have a, a amended resolution, uh, with some, um, specific changes, most notably, uh, language to change, um, the conditions regarding the affordable units and the condominiumizing, um, and the, the financing, uh, and the ability for, for rental and sales. Uh, in addition, we have an amendment to the staff report. Uh, part of tonight's meeting will be approving or adopting the SEQA exemption that's not listed, um, on the first page. Uh, so again, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to review the, uh, the project for a new, uh, nineteen-unit multifamily residential townhome development at one thousand Drake's Landing Road in North Larkspur. Um, to review the relative, the project relative to the goals and policies of the general plan and the housing element, uh, as well as the required findings for design review, uh, conduct a, uh, public hearing, um, hear comments from the public, and then, uh, make a decision about the resolution for, um, the project, consistent with the odds, design review, the density bonus requests, um, the circulation assessment permit, tentative map, grading permit, tree removal permit, and the SEQA exemption. Uh, really quickly, um, the project site is, uh, made up of, uh, four parcels currently. It's about thirty-four thousand square feet. There's one existing building in the center of the site. Um, it's a two-story, uh, commercial building, uh, to use now for, uh, attorney's office, about four thousand square feet of rentable floor area. Uh, the general plan designation is neighborhood commercial. Uh, and the new zoning, and as Elise just explained, the housing element was adopted today by H C D. Um, had previously been a combination of C two and, uh, planned development and is now R three. Um, the applicant had an open house in early June to present the project to the community. Um, that was not hosted by the city. Um, here a quick, the, the site looking on the left there, looking east towards the freeway on Drake's Landing Road, you can see the existing building. Um, and then at the intersection of Del Monte Loop Road, uh, and Drake's Landing Road, looking, um, west towards the Bonner Shopping Center. Um, and there's the office building of the, um, upper left-hand corner. The proposed project before you is nineteen residential condominium townhomes in four separate buildings. There are four affordable units. Um, there is a tentative map creating two lots. Uh, Lot one will include three of the four buildings, three-story residential buildings, one hundred, two hundred, and three hundred. And then Lot two will include, uh, a one, uh, three-story residential building, building four hundred, which includes the four affordable units. Um, the applicant is asking for density bonus, uh, concessions and waivers. Uh, specifically, the concessions are to group the affordable units in that building four hundred, um, and to allow them to use, uh, vinyl window treatments as opposed to, um, aluminum or wood as required by the Form Based Code. Um, the waivers are, uh, essentially twenty separate waivers for things like maximum height, uh, for setbacks, uh, for outdoor, um, open private space for retaining walls. Um, and those are all in the staff report. Um, in addition, there's new landscaping, uh, new drive aisles, site improvements, um, and parking spaces. Uh, here's the site plan. Um, moving, uh, left to right, you can see, um, that's building two hundred on the left, building one hundred at the back, building three hundred closest to Drake's Landing Road and building four hundred closest to the intersection. Uh, units sixteen through nineteen are the four affordable units. Um, each unit has parking. Uh, the majority have two parking spaces in a garage at ground floor. Uh, and then the units in, uh, building four hundred also have, uh, one garage space and one driveway space. Uh, in addition, the project has three, uh, guest spaces located, uh, at the end of Alley A on the top left-hand corner um, and right at the driveway, um, in Alley B, which is an ADA space. Uh, the project also requires, uh, removal of nine onsite trees, um, six of which are coast live oaks considered heritage trees. The remainder are, uh, Monterey pine. Uh, most of them are in, are in varying degrees of health. And there's an arborist report that went with the project. Uh, project also requires a grading permit to remove, uh, because it's more than a thousand cubic yards of cut. And in this case, there's twenty-four hundred cubic yards being, um, cut and build. The requested entitlements tonight are a vesting tentative map, uh, to, um, separate the project into the two lots and to, uh, create a condominium map. Um, a design review to ensure consistency with the odds, um, as, uh, pursuant to the R three zoning. Um, as part of the odds in the Form Based Code, this, this project has been designated a T four, uh, neighborhood transect. Um, and in the odds, it has very specific standards, um, for design. As part of the, the project approval, they're asking for waivers to many of those requirements. Um, again, the concessions, um, are to group the affordable units and to, um, allow for different window treatments. Um, and then the waivers are in the staff report, um, the twenty listed. Uh, there's a circulation assessment permit per the, uh, Larkspur Municipal Code. Uh, anytime a project adds one more, one or more peak hour trip, uh, to the local circulation network, they have to go through the circulation assessment permit. Um, again, a tree removal permit, a grading permit, and then the SEQA exemption. So this project was submitted in, um, early February of this year under what's called the Housing Accountability Act, um, S B three thirty and something called the Builder's Remedy. Um, and the specific reason for the Builder's Remedy was because at the time, the housing element was not yet certified by H C D Housing, uh, the State Housing, uh, Department. Um, and because of the two separate zoning designations for this property, the C two and the planned development, uh, there would be sort of, uh, complications with how staff would apply, um, design review and development standards. And so because of the Builder's Remedy, the applicant was afforded certain protections under the state law. Um, now that said, as the housing element came into compliance and was adopted by, uh, the city and ultimately H C D, uh, the property was then rezoned to R three as an opportunity site. Because it's an opportunity site, um, and consistency with the housing element, uh, the applicant and the application reverts back to the odds and the consistency in the compliance with the R C, R three, um, zoning designation. Um, as such, staff deemed the application complete in early September, and emergency ordinance was passed to, um, facilitate that R three consistency. Um, and here we are. With that, um, Housing Accountability Act and S B three thirty, the applicant is also afforded certain protections, um, and density bonus. Uh, because the underlying density for the site, twenty-one units to the acre, um, it's a little, it's about point eight acres, which staff determined would be sixteen units allowable density. Because they're providing for affordable units, they're allowed a certain density bonus that brings the total up to nineteen. Again, brings it into compliance with the Larkspur General Plan. Um, again, noted the concessions incentives and the waivers. Um, they're in the staff report, but we'd be happy to speak with them. Uh, as also being consistent with the H A A, the, the applicant can apply for certain parking ratios as defined by the government code because the project is in, um, a half mile of a major transit stop, which is the Smart Train and the Ferry Building. Um, because of that, they were able to reduce the overall parking ratios, uh, meaning they didn't have to apply as many, um, uh, guest spaces on site. I'll go through quickly the, the elevations in the design of the, the project. The applicant, I'm assuming has their own, um, presentation and they can speak more to the design. Uh, but again, the majority of this project, the design specific, um, is already found to be in compliance with the odds, the objective design standards with the concessions and waivers. Um, as outlined in the staff report, um, the design itself, the physical design is approved ministerially through the housing element, through the general plan consistency. So although you are, um, sort of, uh, providing your review of the odds tonight, um, staff has already determined that the project design itself, um, does not require a entitlement here. Um, so these are the front elevations of building one hundred and two hundred. These are the front elevations of building three hundred and four hundred. These are perspective renderings of all four. Building four hundred again, these are the four affordable units grouped at the far east end of the property. Uh, the materials and color selection, um, grays and muted earth tones. Um, they're proposing, um, certain types of metal, stucco, uh, board and batten siding and, um, uh, asphalt chingle roofing. Uh, here's the, uh, the applicant's landscape plan, uh, fully landscaped, all the, all the site work on. Um, all the trees have to be removed and the, and the property has to be mass graded. Um, this is just the lotting plan. The red represents Lot Two. The rest of the, uh, facility will be on Lot One. And here's an applicant's, uh, visual simulation looking west along, um, Sir Francis Drake Road. Um, and that's the project site behind, um, the existing building there at the Del Monte Loop intersection. Staff also, um, evaluated the project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Uh, the applicant submitted several technical studies, including traffic, um, air quality, cultural resources, an arborist report, a geotechnical report. Um, and based on those technical studies, staff determined that the project is exempt from SEQA. And there are two very specific exemptions, the class thirty-two fifteen three three-two infill exemption, which if the project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning, which it is, um, it's within the city limits, no more than five acres, surrounded by urban uses. Uh, there's no habitat value on site. Uh, the project does not result in any significant impacts as determined by their technical consultants. Um, and it can be adequately served by utilities and public services. Um, in addition, the project is also consistent with the Larkspur General Plan and Larkspur Housing Element, which is the, um, one-five-one-eight-three, um, SEQA exemption for, uh, tiering off other environmental documents. Essentially, the housing element in the rezoning of the site, creating it a priority site. Uh, the environmental assessment for that document, as long as the project's consistent with that determination, it also is, uh, qualifies for this exemption. Um, so the project is exempt from SEQA. No further SEQA review is required. And with that, um, this is kind of a unique project in that, um, although there's a designer view and an odds component, as I stated earlier, that's technically already approved ministerially. Um, your, um, your review and approval today is to confirm that it is consistent with the odds. Um, in addition, with the density bonus concessions and waivers, um, even though, uh, the waivers require, uh, uh, for instance, that the site is a, um, two-story twenty-five feet, and they're proposing three-story forty-five feet. Uh, but because they are providing the affordable housing, they're allowed ult-, um, unlimited waivers. That's a development standard waiver, therefore they qualify for that waiver, uh, under the H A A and S B three thirty. As long as they're consistent with, with the general plan and the zoning, um, we have to approve those, um, concessions and waivers. Um, so the application today is technically approving the tentative map, the lotting plan, the circulation assessment permit, um, the tree removal, the grading permit, and then the SEQA exemption. Um, as, as demonstrated in the staff report, staff can make all the findings, which is included in the resolution before you. Um, there have been maybe four or five public comments on the project. As I stated, the applicant had an open house in early June. Uh, they received feedback there. There've been very few comments on this project. Uh, mostly about traffic and circulation, um, opinions. Uh, one neighbor asked about the safety of the driveways, uh, for the units in building four hundred as they accessed Drake's Landing Road, and then other comments were, were about general construction activities and the disruption that that. Um, so again, tonight's action, um, the project is consistent with the objective criteria in the Larkspur General Plan, the housing element, the zoning ordinance, and the odds. Um, therefore qualifies for the density bonus, which allows the nineteen units. It qualifies for the concessions and the waivers, which allow to cluster the affordable units, to allow for the vinyl window materials of their choice, and that allows for the waivers to the heights, setbacks, site standards, and parking. Um, the project design, as I've already discussed, is, is already technically approved ministerially. Um, so tonight, um, staffer recommends that you open the public hearing, you review it. Uh, we recommend that you approve the project, find that the project is exempt under SEQA, um, and approve the resolution for the tentative map, circulation assessment permit, tree removal, grading permit. And with that, um, I'm. Oh, you, you can do, you can deny the project as currently proposed. Um, you have to, uh, make a determination that the, there's substantial evidence that the project, uh, is in violation of the general plan and municipal code that opposes uh, a health and safety issue. Uh, you could propose, um, additional revised conditions of approval. Um, or with the applicant's consent, you can, um, continue it to a date certain or date uncertain, depending on, on your review, um, and determination. Um, so if you have any questions, uh, that concludes my staff report.
Um, I don't, Liam.
Uh, maybe this is better addressed by the, the applicant. Well, so I guess first of all, I think you already covered it, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So the concessions and waivers, because the site has affordable, I'm hearing an echo. All right. Uh, because the site provides an adequate number of affordable units, the concessions and waivers are allowed to them by state law, and that's not something that we are in control of here today.
That's correct.
Okay. And then I guess the second one that I have is, uh, the clustering of the affordable units. There's four affordable units total for the project, but there are five units in building four hundred.
That's correct.
Um, so one of those is not affordable.
That's correct.
But that makes it, uh, I mean, we have the reasons that here in the staff report. Financing or tax reasons, um, clustering them is better, but having them seems like they're combined with non-affordable units in that building. So I guess I'm just curious why they can't be combined with the non-affordable units in the rest of the buildings.
Yeah, that's a good question. Tony Craig, uh, resident of San Anselmo. Uh, good evening, planning commissioners. Thanks for making the effort to, uh, have this review tonight, and thank you staff for your good work. It's a very good question. Um, so this is a rental community. And so from a operation standpoint, uh, there's two reasons why we group those. We're going to be deed restricting those, um, for fifty-five years. And so at some point in the near term, which would be more than ten years, um, the owner may or may not to, may or may not want to sell a unit or two. So he's asked me to kind of process approvals through the date, uh, State Department of Real Estate, so he could have that flexibility. But the intent is to rent all nineteen units for at least ten years. That's how we're currently underwriting it. And so if you are deed restricting units, sometimes it's very helpful for them to be on their own parcel. Because as you're doing approvals for D R E, you actually have two different HOAs and two different sets of C C N Rs. So that's one reason. The other reason is that they are, it's more efficient from an operational standpoint. Um, and I can't recall if it was this year January or last year January where there was a law passed, where the um, increase of expenses that can be charged to affordable units, mostly in the context of N H O A. They are, um, there, there's a governor on that. And so whatever the increase is over that ceiling or cap for affordables has to be weighted to the market rate. And so this distribution, although not, you know, democratized, if you will, does allow us to get this financed because it compresses that operating expense structure on those units. And again, they're going to be deed restricted for fifty-five years, so it's helpful to group them and have them on their own parcel for the purposes of forming two HOAs with two different sets of C C N Rs.
I had pretty much the same question. Partly because it seems like a better social situation to mix the lower income with the rest of the, the folks. Um, if, if it were possible, uh, which seems like it could be.
Yeah, and typically that is the way we would do it, but this is kind of a unique, um, project in terms of how it's designed, both physically and how it's being operated initially. For example, on Magnolia Village, we distributed those evenly, um, because that was a um, route for sale project. It was very easy to do that. They were all under one H O A. They weren't initially being deed restricted as rental units. And so that is the difference with the distinction. Uh, also wanted to go back to one, uh, question you had, even though there's five units on that one parcel. When you have a rental community in the state of California that's more than fifteen units, you have to have an onsite resident manager. And so in unit fifteen, that's been ear tagged for that resident manager, be it an individual or couple. And so that's why they're, they're grouped there.
All right. Also, also, and that, just to, um, from an architect's standpoint, why the vinyl windows as opposed to aluminum clad or, or?
That was mainly a cost saving. And so most of the things we try to do, we try to get these things within. So these small infill sites are very difficult.
Yeah.
When you have a certain density, um, you've got essentially three constraints that you try to work within. There's financial constraints, you have to build units that are of a marketable size. Um, there's the physical constraints of the site. If we looked at one of the elevations, you'll see from the picture, there's a huge hill in the middle of it. And the reason why we're taking off more than a thousand uh, cubic yards is we're actually taking some of that elevation off to actually shrink what would be otherwise the ultimate height. Um, and then there's the regulatory requirements. And so that box sometimes is very difficult to fit a marketable project that's also financially feasible on these small sites. And so that's why, uh, we're asking for that one concession. It is very helpful, actually. And we've been working, even though we're in the tentative map stage, we've been working alongside and designing this with the general contractor. So we're very um, clear on what those costs are. So that was one of the things that we saw would be helpful to, uh, allow us to deliver affordable housing to the market.
And to be clear, maybe this is better suited for staff. Um, the concession is not being, you know, the, the applicant has asked for the concession, we're being asked to grant it, but really, it's not the city or the planning commission helping out the, the developer. It's the state rules that are governing this project because they're providing affordable units. Correct?
That's correct.
Did you, do you have any other presentation or is that, uh, pretty much it?
Should, I'll be very.
Sure.
We get some, uh, photo simulations in addition to the perspectives and elevations you saw that I'd like to show you. And also wanted to go over some of the comments that we fielded during the community meeting. I thought there were. Thank you.
No, that's not gonna work. Okay. Why do you have such a big USB?
Is this? There's not one of them, so. It, yeah. Okay, perfect. Yeah, so this is the site. That's the existing two-story office building, which I believe right now is it, actually the answer's on the slide. So let's go to the next slide. You saw the site plan. Next slide, please. Um, you know what we're doing and why we're doing it. Next slide, please. Um, Sean did a good job describing that. Next slide, please. Um, yeah, it might be of interest that, that the family that we're doing this for is a local family. They're a longtime Larkspur resident, also longtime, uh, business owner as well, the O'Neil family. Um, and it's their druthers right now to not entitle it, build it, and sell it. They, they want to maintain ownership. And that actually addresses one of the comments, um, that we received from the community. Next slide, please. And that actually addresses one of the comments that we received from the community. Next slide, please. So these are the questions. So one gentleman, Juan, thought it was important that we state very clearly they're rental townhomes, so yes, they are. As far as traffic and too little setback, couple comments. The project will create two more trips in both the AM and PM, so that's over the one, so it's four, so we're three over that one hurdle, which is why we're applying or asking for the cap. But not to any levels of significance based on the traffic study, and most daily trips would wait walking or biking based on the proximity to the Bonner Shopping Center, Niven Park, the Quater Madera Creek Trail, and the ferry terminal, and Larkspur, and Larkspur Landing. The setback condition for Plan Fives is, is not novel, and it's appropriate. If we're to locate units that are marketable by size, provide that onsite parking that we heard a lot about from the neighbors, and provide for adequate retention for C-three basins, that many of you know that you have to treat onsite stormwater, and so we refer to those as C-three basins, that's the regulation. And so there's two onsite that we can look at a little bit. So when you have all these physical constraints for, for onsite stormwater treatment for fire, for solid waste, and trying to make marketable units, these are why we have these requests for waivers. And I think frankly, the city did a very good job with odds. It made it very easy to kind of design and work through. But when you get on these, these tight sites, you, you, you need inches and feet here and there, and so that's why there are those twenty waivers requested. The guests of a hundred, a thousand Drake Slanting Road residents would increase parking demand. There's a good amount of offsite parking along Drake Slanting Road. I visited the free, site frequently since last year August. And I have seen a lot of parking on the south side of Drake Slanting Road for people visiting Niven Park. There's really one or two, you know, cars on the north side, and so I think that will be an adequate opportunity for guest parking, and plus we have three onsite. So when you look at the city code, notwithstanding the guest parking space, we're actually forty onsite, so in total, we're actually over both the state density bonus parking ratio as well as the local code. So just to kind of beat a dead horse a little bit, there's a lot of folks that are living behind Niven Park that were commenting that a lot of the people that stopped to enjoy Niven Park are actually parking in front of their homes. The guest parking for Drake Slanting would not increase that or exacerbate that issue. This was interesting to me. How can someone inexperienced with development find confidence in the proposal? This project is designed by professional developers and design consultants who have decades of experience, not only designing, but building housing products successfully that meet the unique physical constraints of the site, marking conditions, and the various regulatory requirements of public agency. So what's being proposed comes from experience as opposed to design opinions, not based in financial reality. And this was very important. I wanted to make sure you guys were benefited of this. What is the height of the existing office building compared to building, I think it's one hundred, three hundred, and four hundred. The highest is three hundred, so we'll talk about that. The existing office building maximum roof elevation is about sixty-four point seven, so call it sixty-five feet. The proposed building three hundred maximum roof elevation, even with some of that dirt being scraped off to reduce it, is seventy-two, so it's about seven and a half feet. So that, and their story poles up there now, they weren't required, but we did that actually at the request of our neighbor, Douglas Enterprises that we've been talking to, so they requested four story poles on the northwest and northeast corners of building three hundred and four hundred, so we did that as a gesture of goodwill to our neighbor. And then the last comment was more should be done to provide housing at lower cost to people. I totally agree, which is why we're doing three of the four at sixty percent of AMI, and one at a hundred percent of the area meeting outcome. So, next slide, please. And so some of the benefits, you know, we're providing affordable housing on a site that is a site listed as an opportunity site by the city housing element. Based on the proximity and the parking that we're availing onsite, we're minimizing those vehicle trips, we're definitely enhancing the Drake Slanting Road's streetscape. And again, the property owner intends on holding this long-term. And so he was more than motivated to make sure that it's maintained at a, at a very high level. He'll more than likely hire a professional third-party property management company so that, you know, he can achieve his revenue assumptions. And so that came out of a comment, someone said that, you know, renters don't upkeep their property. Well, in this case, with communities like this, they're professionally managed, so it's quite the opposite. Next slide, please. And so these are some photo simulations, and you see View One is looking northeast from Niven Park at building one hundred. And View Two is looking northwest at building what's the building number again? That's two hundred. Two hundred, thank you, Sean. And then View Three is right at the corner of Del Monte and Drake Slanting Road, and that's looking at building four hundred. Next slide, please. And this is the, the last photo sim. We wanted to make sure we captured, this is if you're traveling east from the one oh one off-ramp, going west on Sir Francis Drake. And we wanted to show the height of buildings four hundred and three hundred over the Douglas Enterprise-owned office building with Mount Tam in the background. Next slide, please. And that's it. This is a plan set, so if you have any architectural questions, civil engineer questions, landscape architecture questions, traffic questions, those consultants are joining via Zoom now. Thank you.
I do a question about planting, you know, my wife's a big pollinator-friendly planting. She runs a nonprofit for that. What, what do you have regarding that? Are you trying, are you going to be planting with natives?
Sorry, yeah, I don't know if you're continuing to speak, but
So is Scott Volmer, are you on Zoom?
I do see Scott Volmer as an attendee. I can allow them to speak if that's the consultant.
Allow them to speak. I would say, yes, so this gentleman was actually hired because this is his Bailey Way. He's out of Davis. I've hired him on other jobs. He does a great job, and it's all native, it's drought resistant. And we're open to ideas about pollinating plants if you have them.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great, good evening. So
Go ahead.
To, to talk about pollinators. My list is split between sun and shade, for starters. Because when you have a built environment, you instantly have shade day one, so it's actually a great opportunity get some diversity on the site. They're all native plants. Mostly native to Sonoma and Marin County, some of them, you know, native to California. But then the shrub and perennial plant list are flowering natives that would probably support pollinators nine months out of the year. So they're spread across, California natives tend to flower late summer into fall, so I, I do have some favorites on that list that I've used for other reasons for, for pollinator plants. Salvias are there, gooseberries are there, California fuchsia, seaside daisy, so insects, hummingbirds, tiny little things we can't really see. All of them will be hosted by these plants.
That's great. Thank you for saying so. Again, you know, the, I'm like, I'll give a plug for this nonprofit called Refugia Marin.org, which works with local developers, builders, schools, et cetera. Yeah, that'd be great. It's, it's on their website, Refugia Marin.org.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was going to do next. Thank you, though. Is there anybody who is on Zoom who would like to make a comment?
If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand and we can unmute you. No hands raised.
All right. All right, well, that'll close the public comment section then. Any other comments from fellow commissioners?
Yeah, so, yeah, sure, I'll go. So I guess it seems like, I guess to start things off, it doesn't seem like we we're, we're sort of restricted by state law here, right? So it, it doesn't really seem like we have a lot of choice. We pass the odds, and this is in compliance with those, so. And so I guess I'll just start off with that, but in terms of the design, I mean, I, 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 I kind of like the design. I think this is a great spot for housing. It seems like sort of an underutilized site right now. So I, I think, I mean, in general, I think I'm, I'm in favor of more housing. It's a good spot, and and it's a nice design that is in compliance, so.
Brock?
I tend, I tend to agree. If, if I had anything, I would try to spread the low income amongst the buildings. And, you know, it's, it's sort of an interesting process where we really don't have that much we can add or, and or say. I also think that it's a great location for high density. I mean, the park right across the road practically is fantastic. My initial reaction looking at the site plan was, where do people play outside? And then when I drove there, I went, that's where they go, so. So I'm, I'm okay with it, too.
So I think this meets all the criteria that we talked about when we developed the housing element. This is the, excuse me, this is the exact type of property and project which meets the needs of what we voted on for the housing element. And I think that the only concern I would probably have, and I'm sure that you have the same, is that, you know, for children, safety is paramount, you know, with that street. It's a bit, it's not that busy a street, but it, you know, that things need to be made sure that there's slow driving there. I don't know whether the city can put in speed bumps or whatever that needs to be put in to keep people from driving fast down that street. I think I'm thrilled that you're putting in native plants, that's great. I think it's going to be a nice project, and it's going to meet the needs, and it certainly will add to the decrease the number of units that we need to have for our affordable housing, right? So I'm in favor as well, so I think we should take a vote.
More question, maybe for staff. Are there plans to put in a crosswalk at the intersection of Drake Slanting Road and what's the other one?
Yeah, what's this thing? That little street, that little spur there?
Berry?
Yeah.
What's the name of that little spur is off of Drake Slanting Road between that and Sir Francis Drake? Del Monte, that's Del Monte, got it.
Um, we don't know of any plans to put in a crossing at this time. There's, not, not that we're aware.
I guess that's not really something that we can require.
Yeah, they would need to make sure it's appropriate.
Yeah, okay.
There is a crossing there at Sir Francis Drake.
Right, I was looking at the, you know, the intersection right by the
Right, 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 over here.
But that's
That's up to the civil city engineer.
So, we're looking for a motion for you to approve Attachment One as revised, which is what's on your dais tonight. And then that would approve the project subject to the findings and conditions.
And do we have to also do CEQA?
Resolution twenty twenty-four zero four, that, that would make the CEQA findings as well as adopt the project or approve the project.
Okay, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four. Is that all you need?
Second.
Commissioners, Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Sue, let's see here. Yeah. Maybe I don't know about it. Let's see, where is my, where's my agenda? Thank you. All right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve the September twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting minutes.
We have none for you. I have a whole pile of them, so unfortunately, you're going to get a lot at once, but there's none for you to prove tonight. I don't think I even got I get one set, I might
From last, last time.
You think I had one set there? In the, it would have been the beginning of your
I don't think there were.
I didn't see one.
I don't think there was even one, yeah.
Okay, all right, well then, next, any planning commission reports?
No, not really. I mean, this is an example of what we're going to be, oh yeah, facing as time goes on. I mean, they're doing a pretty nice job, but we'll see. As others come along.
Yeah, over the next, yeah, sure, that's the whole point, the housing element, I guess. All right, well, very good, so our next motion, our next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
I second that motion.
I, by acclamation.
Yay.
Yay.
I, yes.
All right.
Not even eight o'clock.
Yeah, that might be a new speed record.
That was a new record.